Committee meeting to order. I would consider a motion for consideration of claims. This is, I guess, 6:46. Thank you for noting that for me.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve bills to be paid in the amount of $157,375.56, manual checks in the amount of $2,216.07, and payroll and liabilities for the 208 of 17 payroll in the amount of $354,353.32, for a total of $513,944.95.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Anything from city administrator or from our finance director?
No comments, Your Honor. Good.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Easy enough. This meeting is adjourned at 6:47 PM.
19th, 2017, regular council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If Councilmember Larson would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we all enjoy. Thank you for the ability to live here in this wonderful city and the state of Wyoming. Please bless us, and all that we do tonight is counsel. And please pour out your blessings upon the members of law enforcement and the military services that every day risk their lives to protect us all. We ask that you keep this city safe and under your guidance. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I would ask that the city clerk, your roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Cody.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Present.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here. I declare that we do have a quorum. I would ask that we, I would entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Baker and Councilman Gibbon from this meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. At this time, we'd like to open up for communication from the floor for citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak on that later. I would ask any individual who wishes to address the council at this time, approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. I would ask that the city clerk, please read the consent agenda by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of minutes December 5, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes December 19, 2017, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for December 19, 2017. Approval of the Riverton Municipal Court Report for the month of November 2017. Adoption of ordinance number 17-028 on second reading, Eastern Shoshone Planned Unit Development Zoning. And I'll read that by title only. Proposed ordinance number 17-028, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the zoning of Eastern Shoshone Business Park to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, to PUD Combined Commercial/Industrial/Residential Planned Unit Development. Adoption of ordinance number 17-029 on second reading, vacating alley adjacent to 1,001 West Main Street. Proposed ordinance number 17-029 by title only, an ordinance vacating a 10-foot alley on the east side of lots 1 and 2, Bonnie Bray Addition, to the city of Riverton, Wyoming.
Are there any other items that need further discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Chairman, clock.
Finance committee recommendation for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of 100, well, $157,375.56, manual checks in the amount of $2,216.07, payroll liabilities for December 8, 2017, in the amount of $354,353.32, for the total of
Okay, thank you. Chairman, entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Lex Line items on the finance committee section. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I did, I guess, and I wasn't sure how to present this in terms of the PUD, I wanted to have an opportunity to talk about it a little bit, but with it on the consent agenda, didn't really have a discussion time, so I didn't know if you wanted to, if you minded if I just brought up something with that really quickly now or when.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I had an opportunity to look a little bit at the PUD, and this is maybe a little bit early to be discussing this because right now, all we're doing is we're in the second reading of actually zoning that tract of land to be the mixed combined PUD, whatever you'd want to call it. But in talking about this with the city administrator, we, one of the concerns, I guess I had, is normally we would have a full-time community development director. Of course, we appreciate everything that Mr. Paskett has been doing, but in terms of dealing with the PUD, I guess one of the things that I would really appreciate is having somebody look at it and tell us just a little bit of what we're looking at in comparison to other PUDs. Is this something, you know, what are we giving up with this? What are we getting with this? And somebody who that's really in their wheelhouse. And I had discussed with Mr. Tolsted the idea of maybe having a, another person look at it that is a community development director, at least has that knowledge, since we don't have a community development director right now. And I just wanted to bring that up for the council to see if there was any interest in doing that. If there was, I think Mr. Tolsted could say that he's looked into it a little bit, but just wanted to get some feedback from the council on that, if that's something we would want to do or not. If we are going to do it, now would be the time to do it, as I understand. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Yes, that would be correct. Based on your current timeframe, the, what you have before you is a zoning of the, of the tract of land into mixed-use PUD, which is appropriate. You're on second reading, you're, it's moving as we had planned. The neck, in, at third reading, you would also have a resolution adopting the guidelines that goes immediately following this, so you would approve it on third reading and then approve the agreement, would ideally be how that works. If, as Councilman Hancock noted, he did ask, we did have a conversation about it, and I did look into it a little bit. From the preliminary conversations I've had with one of the Wyoming-based community planners out of Sheridan, that can be done in enough time for us to have a look at, have a look at it and provide additional information before the next meeting, keeping in mind that that doesn't, that would not slow up that part of the approval process regardless. The worst it could do is, if we needed time based on that report, temporarily, temporarily slow down the guidelines, PUD, PUD document, but that would be brief at best. We have already worked through that with Steve Wilson in, in great detail, a lot of us have. So I don't expect a lot of things, but as Councilman Hancock pointed out, we are lacking an individual that actually focuses on land use, and that's what you could do. It would, the cost would be approximately $2,500, I think, and it would take, if that is a direction we receive from council tonight, we would send that off tomorrow morning.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts about that? I guess, Mr. Paskett, do you have any comments on that?
Your Honor, Tony and I have discussed this today. We met with Mr. Wilson. I think a third-party reviewer would be a good use to look at it and see, because that's not my expertise whatsoever.
Okay. Councilman Larson.
Tony, do you have any misgivings about it? You've looked at it, and I know you're not an expert in that area, but do you have any misgivings right now?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
The, on, on face of it, no, not, not extremely. Some of the challenges with some of this is that there's a certain amount of what I tend to refer to as ignorant, innocent ignorance. I don't, I've worked through PUDs as an administrator before, but the job of the planning development director, community development director in those situations was to work through the setbacks. What I am lacking is the understanding or experience in dealing with how setbacks and how all of these, all of these different pieces work together in terms of best practices. So I don't have, I don't, I don't feel that anybody is trying to get anything through or, or, but I don't have the ability to provide you the information that I tend to think is important, how that works, or, or to, we've worked through some different language on a number of items that I'm happy to say was, I mean, they, Mr. Wilson, as their representative, has been great to work with. I just don't have all of the information to provide you. But to answer your question directly, I don't feel I have any inherent misgivings, no.
Okay. Did you have questions?
Yeah, so I guess my question is, is who pays for this review? Which pot of money does it come out of? I know we're kind of running a tight line, and I heard $2,500. So I guess my question is, we know the how much, so now, how's the how pay?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe we have a line item for plan review that, and I wish I would know right off the cuff.
$10,000 is what we have in, in budgeted for third-party plan review fees for the entire year.
Okay. Do we know what current remaining is?
I do not.
It's close to that.
It's close to that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, no, I was just.
Mayor, if I may, I do expect it to come in under $2,500, but that's a, that's a relatively safe number. What I will, what is most important is that you understand what that actually buys you is, somebody who is involved in urban planning and has a background that can read it and provide you the questions, concerns, and thoughts that they have on it, but it's not somebody who's going to come in and negotiate or, or discuss it for you. It's a review, it's to, it's to draw attention to certain items, say things that are good, hey, you want to, here's a concern, but hey, this is really good. So it's, it's both sides of that, but it's important that you understand what that actually buys you.
Okay. So does that require?
Well, I guess, okay, so as I understand it, Tony, you, you have somebody that is qualified to do that, and that can get on it in a timely fashion? I know this is a challenging time of year to get anything done.
Mr. Mayor, I did have that conversation today, just to make sure that if the question came up, that I knew that we could, and that the response to that was, from them, was yes, they can provide it back to us by the 28th, which would allow those comments to be seen by council at the next meeting. Ideally, we would get it significantly before that, so we would have some more time to review it as well.
Right. Okay.
Your Honor, I'm, maybe, I'm just curious, I mean, is this into the weeds of, I mean, it's in the budget, and do we need to take action? I mean, are you asking us to take action on it? Or because it's covered by a budget line item and within your authority, you should be taking care of that anyway? You just want some guidance? I mean, I'm curious what we're talking about here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you have two options. One is if everybody's looking at me going, you know, that's what we want, some guidance is appropriate if the guidance is clear. If not, I would tell you to make a motion, I would advise you to make a motion and, to make it clear that that is something you want to do.
What do you think?
Well, and I guess, my opinion is this is a, this is a huge project for us going forward. And so I think a little extra care in making sure everything and everybody is agreeable in the beginning before we get started is far better than changing horses in the middle of that stream later. And so I think that's probably money well spent. And so, I mean, I don't see any heartburn. Mr. Wilson, do you have any heartburn with the issue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, I just would like to say that we had this conversation today, and Tony and our city administrator and the rest of staff, we spent a lot of time working on this, trying to get where it's at. The one thing that I brought up today, and I want to make sure I bring up to everybody, is, you know, what we've tried to do is, by putting this into a PUD, is create the opportunity to bring a cohesiveness to this development, so it's not just straight zone. You know, your current zoning doesn't have any landscape requirements, doesn't have any signage requirements, doesn't have any architecture requirements, doesn't have a whole list of things that this says, hey, at 5,000 feet, let's keep, you know, these certain items the same throughout the project, so it, it, you know, in 20 years, the project looks like it was well thought out and well planned. That's been the whole idea and the whole thought process behind this. It's not to say, okay, let's take, you know, some arbitrary city, and here's what their guidelines are like, and here's what Rivertons are like, and try to bring this up to here, because that wasn't the intent.
Right.
Intent is for project-driven and project-specific. So with that caveat, I think it's a great idea. I want everybody to be comfortable with what we've shown, so, I think it's a good idea. Thanks.
Mrs. Harris has been trying to get your attention.
I don't mean to interrupt. I wanted to provide some clarification with regards to the plan review fees from the finance perspective. Historically, the plan reviews have been paid for by the, by the city, but they have been charged back to the developer or the party requesting whatever the project is. So I just wanted to provide clarification for that, that it's not something that the city typically pays for.
That's good to know.
City administrator.
Had a look on my face. However, it, I, that's how we're paying for it out of this line item. However, I'm not recommending that we, we charge that back at this point. The reason is, this is for our sake. We are doing the, we're, this isn't a plan review as much as it is a full PUD. It doesn't exactly fit, and we're asking to do this after second reading, for our comfort and our, and our clarity and just our peace of mind. And there is a distinct possibility that it'll come back and it'll say, you know what, I'm sure that they always find something, but that it's going to be minor and, and it's just fine. That's meant to give everybody a great deal of, you know, faith in, so.
In the absence of having a full-time, specifically trained community development director, that we could have possibly done this on our own if we had that person sitting in place.
Mr. Mayor, exactly.
Okay.
So, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we give direction to city staff, particularly to the city administrator, to have a third-party review of the PUD as he would designate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Resolution Number 1360, Airport Improvement Project Grant. Public Works Director.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you just referenced, coming before you is a resolution related to grants to support capital improvements at the airport. This is part of the air, excuse me, the Airport Improvement Program by the FAA, and then also part of grants offered by the Wyoming Aeronautics Division. Specifically, this resolution and these grants pertain to the general aviation apron up at the, up at Riverton Regional Airport. To provide some historical content, or context, excuse me, the original apron was placed and paved in 1978, so just about 40 years ago. The last time it was rehabilitated was in 1989, so 28 years ago. We are due for an improvement. The design of this project is ongoing and is taking place right now and is supported by federal and state grants, and that is being taken care of during this current budget. So what is coming before you is the construction of this general aviation apron. What it will entail is a three-inch asphalt overlay with pavement strengthening fabric. We will be replacing the concrete hardstands, there are two of them, and then also we'll be changing the direction of the tie-downs for general aviation parking. If you look in your packet, there is a map that will highlight in blue the area in question and the hardstands in question as well. There are the two square blocks just north of the apron itself. As part of this resolution, we're also asking council to motion that they give staff signatory authority on the applications of these grants, just for ease of administration. The grants do require a local match, and as it is currently laid out, the FAA will cover 90% of the construction costs. The state will then pick up 6% of the construction costs, and then the city of Riverton will cover 4% of the construction costs. You will notice in the table on the staff report, however, there is ARIW-32C. That is a grant that is a state and local-only grant that is part of this project, but it includes portions that will not be covered by the Federal Aviation Administration, and this is an 80-20 grant. With that being said, Your Honor, to staff's recommendation that this resolution be approved and signatory authority be given to staff, and I welcome any questions at this time.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, make the motion that we approve Resolution 1360, supporting the application of grants AIP 3-56-0024-045, ARIW-32B, and ARIW-32C, and give signatory authority to city staff.
Second.
Good job.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Kyle?
Kyle, what is the amount that's gonna, the local funds is at a, is it the 20,000 or the 42,000, or is it the 60,000? What is, what are local, what's, what's, how much of the, what, how much are we gonna pay of that?
Your Honor, Councilman Larson, it is a combination of the both, so in total it would be $62,939. And again, these are off of estimates. Once we get closer and finalize our design, and once we get closer to bidding the project, the grants, as far as their offer, will be right-sized to the amount of the actual construction costs.
So is that in our budget currently, or will be in our budget in the future?
Your Honor, Councilman Larson, that will be part of our upcoming budget.
So next year's budget. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, the item on our agenda is a memorandum of understanding with Big Horn Co-op. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a memorandum of understanding, and before I get into a brief report on this, I want to make note that I have given you hard copies. The MOU has been changed slightly from what was in your council packet. I have highlighted the change, it is minimal, and this change really reflects something that Fremont County desired to be included. What it states is that should the railroad ever choose to come back to the city of Riverton, and if it happens in the next two years, there is a reversion clause, and that needs to be taken into account. So I wanted to make sure you had that before you. To give a little bit more context to the MOU, this is tied to the North Federal Reconstruction Project that is coming up over the next two construction seasons. As we know, vehicular traffic will be impacted during this construction, as with any, however, YDOT plans and has put a contract condition to have a minimum of two lanes of travel that will accommodate two-way traffic, very similar to what occurred on South Federal. Big Horn Co-op owns and operates a business on North Federal Corridor, and they have hired James Gores and Associates to look at the issues of access. And I want to make note that Mr. Eric Carr is here representing James Gores and Associates. And I want to make note that Mr. Eric Carr is here representing James Gores and Associates. James Gores and Associates has looked into the issue and they have designed a temporary access for the Big Horn Co-op to take place at the rear of their property. This would be an access that would go across the Rails to Trails property, that is a Fremont County right-of-way, and then tie onto Pure Gas Road, which, as you know, is a city of Riverton right-of-way. This issue was considered by members of senior staff, and we felt that this would be possible as long as an agreement or an MOU would be put in place between the interested stakeholders and Big Horn Co-op. The stakeholders are ourselves and Fremont County. Some key issues just to note that are in the MOU. First and foremost, there will be no financial burden on the city of Riverton or Fremont County for this temporary access. Any damage made from this access on our right-of-way or Fremont County's right-of-way will be the responsibility of Big Horn Co-op to repair. It'll also, it also references that the maintenance of this access will be the responsibility of Big Horn Co-op. And finally, the Big Horn Co-op will remove the temporary access within 30 days after substantial completion of the North Federal project. This will have no budgetary impact on the city of Riverton, and it is my recommendation that city council enter and execute memorandum of understanding between the Big Horn Co-op. Thank you, Your Honor.
Does anybody have any questions? For Mr. Carr? Kyle?
Mr. Carr, what size of equipment are we gonna have going over that? I mean, are we gonna have big belly dumps and tankers and is the road on Pure Gas Road capable of carrying what you want it to use?
Your Honor, we will design the, the temporary access to accommodate any legal-size highway load that would normally travel down any of the roads in Riverton, so.
And I guess, point of order on myself, I would entertain a motion first of all, then we can discuss having it, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Lance? All right. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Lance?
Mr. Carr, is it the intention or do you know for sure, is Big Horn Co-op intending to close down their access entirely from federal or is this just intended to be a semi-truck or large truck access point?
Your Honor, it will be a secondary supplementary access. They will still have the access point from North Federal. However, we all know that when construction's going on, it is much more difficult, so this will be a less impeded access to their facility.
Councilman.
Where are we at with the county on this? I mean, I know we've gotten a change here as the, so far before we enter into this, everybody seems to think it's gonna work. I just don't want to have to come back in a few weeks and do this again if we don't have to, so.
Your Honor, I do not have an update on that. Perhaps Mr. Carr does.
Your Honor, we actually attended the Fremont County Commission meeting this morning, and I have a signed copy of the memorandum for signature today.
We're okay then. All right. Okay.
So, Mr. Carr, so is this going to be something that's gonna be allowed for, because I'm sitting here trying to think of everything that's back there. So there's four or five car dealerships, there's tweeds, there's different construction kind of stuff, so are they all going to, is this all something that they're trying to get together or is this just Big Horn Co-op's can have a road run right into theirs and then? Could I guess my question is, is this gonna be something that's going to be an artery for everybody back there or are we gonna do this in another week when tweeds say, well, that's a good idea, let's get another road through there?
Your Honor, thank you. I appreciate that question. That's a great question. At the beginning, so we've been in negotiation for a couple of years, ever since North Federal was planned for reconstruction with Big Horn Co-op. Their original intent was to approach the businesses and points north of their facility to help with cost sharing for the temporary access. They have not been successful with that, and so they were, one of the options was they would just open their fence on their north side of their property, access the east side from Pure Gas Road with the temporary access, and then open the north side of their fence to have access to points north. With no cost-sharing ability to this point, that's not the plan. So it will, excuse me, the temporary access will simply serve their facility at this point. They're still working on negotiating with businesses to the north.
And none of the actual streets go back that far, the platted streets, so it's challenging.
No, it is. I just wasn't sure if it was something that was, if they approached the other businesses back there or if it was just.
We discussed for a long time.
Yeah, Your Honor, they have negotiated, to my knowledge, they have approached several of the businesses. My guess would be that once construction does take place, they will be much more inclined to help with the access.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilman Godey.
I'd like to circle back maybe to Kyle's question regarding Pure Gas and, and the alternate driving areas instead of federal, like for other vehicles. Is Pure Gas capable of handling heavier traffic that, and, because I guess, I mean, Big Horn Co-op is gonna be directing their truck drivers to use that access point. Is it, are we gonna see such an increase in load on that city street that we can anticipate some damage that we should be prepared for or is it perfectly capable, based on its current engineering, to handle that type of thing? I know it doesn't have sidewalks and, and it's, you know, not fully developed, but I'm curious about that.
It goes from 100 cars a day to 500 cars a day or more. Yeah, I agree with that.
With significant increase in size, typically.
Your Honor.
I don't know.
Kyle first.
Yeah.
Public Works Director, Kyle.
Thank you. As far as the original design of Pure Gas Road, I don't have that information available to me. I could research that. It is safe to say that Pure Gas Road was not built for heavy industrial traffic. That being said, three years ago, there was an overlay performed, shoulders were improved on Pure Gas Road. The subgrade in the existing asphalt that was there prior is still in place. I think what we could risk from a higher load and then also from any increased weight is potential rutting or reflective cracking coming up through that overlay. My personal thoughts are that if we do see significant damage on that roadway, this MOU is very clear that the remediation has to occur at the cost of the Big Horn Co-op.
Still have a question? Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we will go on to item number 12, which is council committee reports. Start with Sean.
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilman Larson.
Your Honor, Monday is normally my day to drive over to think about all the money that the garbage people are stealing, I'm taking from us, and, but instead I was, I was turned on my keeping my driveway clean and my parking lot clean of all the snow, and I want to comment on the city's use of their blade on Main Street, allowing to the center, it appears to be quite successful. Thank you, Kyle, for doing a good job.
Thank you, and I pass it on to my crews who are doing the work.
Yes, thanks. Councilman Hancock.
Your Honor, I had a unique opportunity, something I've never done, which is to participate in, the decision as to the splash pad, who we're gonna be having do the design and the construction and everything, and we've been coming along with that, I think have gotten an idea of who we want to be starting negotiations with and everything, and of course, this is gonna continue to be a process, but just wanted to note that we're at the point now where we're trying to get figured out who we're gonna have be doing the design and the build and everything, and I think at the point where we're starting negotiations, so it's coming along well and excited to see what happens. Excited to see a splash pad in City Park.
Okay. Councilman Godey.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay.
I do have one alibi.
Councilman Peterson.
Just as a reminder, that January 8th, the Fremont County School District Rec Board will be meeting to listen to proposals for the grant or the money applications for 2018. The applications are online on the Fremont County School District 25 website. You can find them there, fill out. It's at 6 o'clock at the city or the school administration building, January 8th, so.
Okay, thank you. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a handful of things, and if you would indulge me for a couple minute, for just a couple minutes, I have discussion on our dashboards that have been provided to you. However, just kind of a heads up, there's going to be a franchise agreement coming forward. Currently planned for the first meeting in January for your consideration, that is something we've been working through. It's been one of the quicker ones that I've ever been part of, but that's a good thing. Everybody was, seems to be very good on all the points, so you'll be considering that and we'll have a discussion for you at that time. As I, as was pointed out previously with some of our discussion, we have been having PUD discussions about the details of those. Mr. Wilson has been great to work with, and those meetings have been going on, there's been, I believe about three of them approximately, and we've spoken over the phone on a number of different items, so that's been very useful in getting some of the details. As you denoted, we are with, we are without a permanent community development director, and that's something that should be moving forward in January. So we'll look forward to updating you on that process as well. If you don't mind, I'm gonna use the.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. Quite briefly, we had talked about a little bit about some dashboard and some metrics, some way to continue to evaluate the activity that is currently going on in the city. You have in your packet some terribly exciting, colorful documents that get a little repetitive, seem to get a little repetitive. Instead of going over all of those, what I wanted to talk a little bit about was just how those are put together and why they were presented in this way. And then I would look forward to hearing your feedback over the next month, weeks, as, as time allows and items that you feel are important or better ways to present those to, to everybody involved. As such, there are just a couple of ways that they were presented this time around. If we look at the current, what I used, the first one, what I used for the first one is calls for service. As something that is a, calculated all the time and recorded all the time, calls for service is a really easy place to start. The reason we give this to you is simply to illustrate to you the activity or the demand on the police department at any given time. In this case, we compare each month as it goes along, so 17 is blue, 16 was red, et cetera, et cetera. So you can see and compare what the current activity is in the year-to-date, or you can see what the current activity is in this month compared to last month, has it been going up? That's a, that's a little bit of an indicator for council and everybody involved as we begin to have conversations, especially when we start going into budget. We can look back and we can start to see, okay, we know that there's been more activity or less activity, and that, and that drives some of our conversations, better informed, better questions, better results. One of the other ways that, sorry, this is not letting me do this, hold on. Okay. I have no idea why it's not letting me do that, that's, there we go, let's just do that. So, we also tried to graph a little bit to show you what we've done, what has happened over the years in terms of service in a different manner, and we provide trend lines accordingly. One thing to note on all of these different items is when you review it, look to the left axis. Obviously, everything starts at 10,000 calls. That's the very baseline. If I were to actually take it from zero to 12,000, this looks a lot more flat. The reason that this is put together in this way is to just illustrate the change, but when we do that, when we bring that floor up to a higher level, we also want to make sure that you understand that the difference is only 1,000 and some odd calls over, and over that much time. And also, there are other items that you're going to find as we question and as we discuss that allow you to say, okay, well, why did it drop so much between 13 and 14? And those are conversations that we can have, so we better understand why we're doing things. It's not meant to say that somebody needs less or that we need more, but it's simply meant to show you what's going on and allow the questions to happen. The other items are a little more predict, the other items with regard to finance, the 1% sales tax, the use taxes, those are, also can have a predictive portion to them. This is the base sheet that we actually use. If you look up here, what we have done is we have used past year's percentages collected in given months to drive an overall percentage collected in those months on average, and then apply that as a predictive method to actually develop what we think is supposed to, what we need to collect in a given month. So if we say in this case that we've budgeted $1.485 million, we would expect that so much comes in in a given month. Here's what came in, here's what was predictive, predicted, and here is the variance, so it's a negative here, a negative here. This is a total variance, so this is just adding up as we go along, so we can have a little bit of an idea. The joke or the comment I've been making about this is that it won't tell you what the temperature in the room is, but it will tell you when it's getting hot, and all of these together kind of help paint that picture. As such, what it ends up, in order to understand this, then it drives sheets like this. So you can see what our actual is, is our blue line, and what our predicted is in these months is our projected. So you can start to see the behavior compared to projected, and you can understand how that is projected. The other good news about that particular table is it actually can be used to predict things like overtime. So if we take the police department, I keep not picking on them, they're just, just used to working with them on, on metrics. The overtime going into Christmas or going into a certain time of year can be higher than the actual percentage of the year elapsed. It has, follows a certain trend year after year. If you take all these numbers out on this model for sales tax and just put in your overtime dollars, you can track approximately how much you've actually been using in those months and create the same predictive measure, so it's not only a metric for our sales tax and the like, it can actually be used operationally if we so choose it in different areas. What you have put together for you is items from public, a great deal of items from Public Works and police, we have permits. All of these items are meant to show you some of the demand on the city, not the response, the demand at this time. So as we look and as we drive these conversations a little bit more, as we get into budget and how we're going to spend money, because that's where the rubber meets the road, we'll have the ability to say, okay, you'll have the ability to say, okay, city administrator, how are we responding to this? And then we can figure out how we, and then we can figure out how to properly convey that same information. But as something to provide you as a dashboard, as a metric, so you can continue to look, this is something we can provide monthly with our weekly reports or the like. Some of them, I will be honest, are gonna be more quarterly. If you look at some of our permits, you're gonna go a few months without, with nothing there, so us reporting those in those months is probably not worth a lot of your time, but breaking it into quarters or on the half or, and just annually at the time of, with smaller items is probably gonna be more useful. So obviously, you have more today than you'll have when this starts actually moving forward. I also understand that the presented documents are a little, kind of a one-trick pony in terms of just the same thing over and over, so we'll look at trying to make those a little different. different, so it's a little easier to read and you'll get used to, you know, the enplanements looking a certain way, and so you can go to those a little quicker. We would look forward to any comments that you have, and both now and in the future, and we really appreciate you taking some time to look what we put together. Thank you.
Councilman Godey?
Just a couple comments and a question. This... I love this stuff. This is... This is good stuff. I have quite a bit of experience with it at the college, and we found it extremely useful in our budget development, and I think it works perfectly in that area. So I like how it's in a variety of areas. The visual images, whether it's in bar graphs or lines, is less of a big deal to me, but the other thing, I guess the question maybe is, is its use. I think it makes sense for, of course, the council to be seeing these, whether it's monthly or quarterly, but I would imagine that there's even some interest on the part of our constituents in trying to be able to post these on the website and encourage traffic to our website when we have questions about areas that are covered in here, so that in real time, at least on a monthly basis, we're able to direct constituents who have questions. I think it would be a great thing to have the links updated at the same time that the councils are updated to drive that traffic to the website, so that people can monitor themselves and look themselves at these areas. So, good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I guess my comments start with, I was at the airport board meeting that we had here last week, and some just really amazing things happening, of course, with the air service coming into Riverton. Our contract with Denver Connections is up this June, I guess it is, and the FAST Committee and the airport staff have been pursuing getting other interested parties for supplying air service to the airport, and believe it or not, we have two people, two companies that have presented proposals to us, and so I think it's an amazing feat that we have been able to draw the attention of more than just one person to try to do this, because I know a few years ago, we were really looking and wondering if we were gonna find one. And so I think we've made amazing headway in moving forward and increasing the traffic and the air service into Riverton, and so it's really sort of fun to watch that curve that we've been following, and we're sort of... We definitely hit the bottom, and our numbers are increasing exponentially in passengers, you know, per month, per year, and so those numbers are looking fantastic. And so I'm really looking forward to seeing how that, you know, the FAST Committee is negotiating with Sheridan and those people that are willing to provide air service, and hopefully we'll have something that we can really talk about here in the very near future. And so it's neat to see that all come together. Also, I'm really excited to see, you know, the development that is gonna be developed out on the Honor Farm property and to get that going. Again, PUD is something that we're not used to dealing with on a lot. I know when I was on Planning Commission, we talked about it a whole bunch, but you just don't see it a ton of them, so it's nice to see development coming to Riverton, and I'm very excited to see the additional commercial and residential and industrial space that we're gonna get from that, and hopefully, again, bring more businesses to town and create, you know, a positive thing for everybody involved, so... So again, I think I want to give staff and the folks from the tribes coming and all the work that they've put into this, and I mean, it really looks like an exciting development for Riverton and Fremont County, so... Does anybody have anything else?
I move we adjourn. I'll second it.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:50.